Please stand for a pledge.
What? I think you know what pledge of allegiance go ahead and lead us.
Okay.
We'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's good written public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Clint. Appreciate it. Um, and I think you got originally who's here, the Urban House trustees and then other officials. Uh, we'll go to the approval of minutes for the approval of the October sixth twenty twenty five village board meeting. And to file September second twenty twenty five finance and personnel committee. The September eighth twenty twenty five Board of Public Works. September ninth twenty twenty five public safety committee, September tenth architectural review board. September fifteenth dangerous animal determination hearing minutes as presented.
Moment. I'll second.
Thank you, David and Andy. Any questions? Uh, Andy?
Uh, two cor- two corrections in the village board minutes. Page two. Under review and consideration of an ordinance repealing and recreating chapter five point one six. Uh, below the motion, it says trustee Armstrong noted the ordinance that was trustee Schwartz that did that. And then the other correction is. Page five. Under report of bills. Under the motion, it says trustee Armstrong inquired if library payment. That was trustee Schwartz. Those are my two corrections.
Thank you. Any other corrections? Uh, yes, Kevin.
Uh, one quick one on the village board. Um, minutes uh, uh, on page two, under a review consideration for an ordinance. Uh, repealing recreating chapter five point sixteen. Uh, it says motion by trustee Curtis with two S's, my claim has one S.
Thank you very much. Any other corrections? All right, hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to be heard on an agenda item or a non-agenda item? Anyone? Okay, we will move on. Uh, just one quick note on business presented by the president. Just uh, keep in mind we'll have a special board meeting. Uh, next Monday, starting at five thirty P M. Uh, we'll start out uh, in open session. Uh, quick item and then we will close session to um, evaluate applicants for the village administrator position. So that will be at five thirty. Um, uh, representative from P A A will be here to present all of those as soon as I get the. Um, the applicants, I will get those up to you all. So, all right. Uh, next on, let's uh, go to resolution ordinances and action items. Um, we're kind of going to change things up a little bit here because I know Clint uh, isn't up to speed on everything that we have here. And I see him shaking his head. So what we're going to do is we're going to look to um, bring up um, these items as a motion. To bring to table for discussion. I know we all have received um, the um. The I C Fs and what we'd like to do is just be able to get a motion and then if you have questions, we can ask those questions. And um, so Clint doesn't have to do the restatement of what's kind of going on here. So uh, let's look for the review and consideration um, of the memorandum of understanding with the O C F D. For payroll and human services, uh, resource services. I'll look for a motion in a second to bring this to the table for discussion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Andy and Kevin. Okay, so kind of what we have here is this was the item that was uh, our table last. Um, last meeting, uh, where essentially what we're doing is uh, is starting twenty, uh, December. Starting January first, what we'll be having is um, the village of Grafton will still continue payroll and human resources services during that time. And that the um, uh, village attorney recommended that we have some changes on the M O U. And after that time, uh, the village. Will not be doing the financial accounting. Is that correct, Paul?
That is correct.
So we've got that kind of little nutshell. Any questions on that? Lisa?
Uh, sure. Um, so I am looking at. And I, let me just check my book. I believe it's the um, memorandum of understanding. See?
Is that the verbal copy?
Uh, no, we see other copy right there. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to look here. Um, and at, at the very top, this memorandum of understanding. Um, the last line says. For administrative support for financing and accounting, but I believe it's just for human resources and payroll services.
Correct, that should be changed.
Okay, and um. And does that also uh? Effect line twenty six where it says. To extend its administrative support specifically in the areas of H R and payroll. That's probably fine.
I think that's fine because yeah, H R payroll is once identified.
Okay. Um. The next question I have is. Under all C F D responsibilities at the bottom of page one. The, the last sentence, it says, O C F D shall notify the village. Of any proposed payroll and benefit policy changes at least thirty days. Prior to consideration. By the board. So I guess my question with that is. I would think that the O C F D board would meet first and talk about any policy changes. Before it would be brought to the village.
I'm going to call Ashley up here. I think Ashley can answer that question for you.
I requested actually that we add that just so that we can kind of have like a strategy session. Before something goes to the board since we are, they're technically our employees. That way we can figure out all of the details prior to it going towards the board. So there aren't any delays. And actually enacting anything that the board has um, approved.
And then uh, does that include the O C F D? Uh, people that would meet with you or no? It's just, it's just for the village to kind of regroup and make a plan. Correct. Okay. Okay. Um. On page two, under village responsibilities, number nine. Provide payroll.
Give us a line, Lisa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Page, uh, line eighty seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, on page two.
By the way, great catches. I appreciate that. You have very nice catches.
Um, number nine says provide payroll timekeeping software. For use by the O C F D during the term of this agreement. The village shall charge the O C F D for share of the software's. Support fee. In the amount of two thousand dollars. Is that just a flat fee or is that in a certain time period?
It's a flat fee for the year.
Also for, it's for the year?
Yep.
Yeah, I think my last question. Um, is on page three. Line one oh one. Under number fifteen. Remind to the O C F D the amount of net ambulance receipts received by the village. In a month. By the fifth business day of the following month until such time as the O C F D begins receiving ambulance receipts into their own accounts. So my real big question about that is, as I understand it with on the O C F D side. I don't believe they're currently getting ambulance. Um, revenues from Stockville and looking at our budget coming into twenty twenty six. I didn't see that the ambulance revenue amount actually moved over into twenty twenty six. Is, are we, are we providing the village, giving the fire department the ambulance revenues? Currently?
Yeah, ultimately, ultimately we will. Right now, it's, it's on hold due to some other issues which will be coming to the board. Early November third meeting.
Okay, so at some point that will go to the fire department.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um. Thank you.
Thank you for those good catches. Anyone else? Yes, Amy?
Um, so in regards to the um. Possible charge for any public records request. If there is going to be a charge to that, who makes, bless you, who makes that decision? If we're going to charge that?
Yeah, public workers requests cannot exceed the actual cost. For state law, so um. It would be basically who did the research and charge them by that hour. Usually copies we pass on that, but so like if Ashley spent four hours. Working on some record requests, we would bill them for four hours overtime.
So there's not just a flat fee of what would be?
Yeah, those chi- those charges uh, are largely dictated by statute.
Okay.
By state statute.
By asking you don't have a microphone, um, we'll repeat that. Yeah, can we, uh, move the microphone over to you? Could you repeat that link?
Yeah, those, those uh.
Thank goodness we got Ash.
I know. Those charges are largely dictated by state statute. We added the term that uh. You know, if there are open records requests related to payroll and human resources that the village. Would respond to those. Other open record requests, uh, arguably O C, the, the fire department would, would respond to them.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions here? Motion in a second. On the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to uh, the O C F D. All right, I'll look for a motion in a second to approve a resolution um, declarate or declaration official intent. By the village of Grafton for inclusion of the um, clean water fund uh, loan application. For the ninth avenue lift station and force main project. I'll look for a motion in a second to bring this to the table.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Andy and Lisa. Okay, Paul, I think you're on your own with this one.
You can listen, I'm sorry.
Or maybe not.
I think it's Ashley, isn't it?
B. B, not C.
I don't have an agenda.
Okay, so, all right. Yeah, this is Brecken.
Oh, this is Brecken, yeah.
And you just want to come up and just give us a quick airplane. That looks like we're looking to uh, see if we can get a loan. Uh, apply for a loan to pay for some of the lift station improvements, correct?
Correct. So uh, we are doing upgrades to our ninth avenue lift station. And running a force main from the northern developments, Stonewall, Tammerack, Hollow, Shady Hollow. Um, and that force main will go all the way down. It's, it's basically our street project for twenty twenty six is framed around this force main. Um, this is just a resolution that says that we will pay back our portions of the loan with the N R. That's what this resolution.
Correct, this is just an intent to pay for a future project. When we go out and borrow, there'll be more resolutions for you to pass and to discuss. So it doesn't, and it doesn't commit us to borrowing.
Good questions. Lisa?
So do we need to make an offer first?
Oh, we do.
Resolution or?
Um, well, yeah, I guess we could. You know, that's a, that's a big question we got to ask all because I know a lot of other. A lot of other organizations don't do offers. They just go right to that, but I think we'll stick to that at this point in time. So if this is a resolution, I'll look for a motion. Uh, when we do redo this, we'll do a motion and an offer in a second.
I will make the offer.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Great, very good. So we have that. Um, any questions?
Uh, just one.
Yes, uh, sir.
Have we applied for loans like this in the past?
Yes, um, this is actually partly how we paid for our headworks.
Yeah, doing this loan program, we actually receive a subsidy off the interest. So generally the interest might be as low as one and a half percent. So going out to the open market and getting over five. So it does save the village or the utility money.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Kevin?
Yeah, um, I just want to know what would happen if we did not get this uh, this loan. I'm just wondering because I see that. The clean water fund is uh, exceeded their amount this past year. So I just wanted to have an idea.
We'll have to borrow.
Yeah, I believe this is commitments for twenty twenty six. So I think it reopens, but we can look into that. We can ver- verify.
Okay.
Hmm. Very good. Any other questions? Okay, we have a proper motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to go to the reported finance and personnel committee. Um, I'm going to be looking for a uh, motion to adopt the updated. Village of Grafton compensation plan and performance evaluation system manual to then to become effective January first twenty twenty second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave and Kevin. Okay, questions on this? I know uh, most of us were present for the finance committee. Uh, we have questions here that we want to ask Ashley. Andy?
Ashley, um. Uh, was the. The recommendation from the um. Compensation study. For the length of service adjustments that, that went from four percent, four percent, two percent, two percent. To two, two, one, zero. Did that come from? The study or was that? Um, staff generated in what, what, what's? I know that you probably explained the premise of it at. The other meeting. Could you go through that again? What the thought process is behind that?
Sure, the consultant didn't propose that change. That was staff. Um. What led to it was the, with the adoption of the study and the. Um, pay grades now becoming more market comparable. A few years ago, we did adopt a um, aggressive approach for our length of service adjustments. Because we recognized that our incumbent employees. Were not at market level. Um, and it was taking them a while to get to um. The third quartile and even the fourth quartile. Um, so now that our pay grades are better aligned with the market, we do not need such an aggressive approach. Um, so we are proposing the more fiscally responsible approach of going to a two, two, one, zero. Um, and with that, then we are strengthening our merit increase. Um, so instead of it being a percentage of COLA. We want to award our performers, people that are doing their job, um. And have these meeting expectations. We strengthen that um, to help. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and because of that, I am in, I'm in, not in favor, but going two, two, one, zero. Um, I think that that shows our long-term employees. Uh, it's, that's a baseline raise. Don't get me wrong. But, a- and you also have merit promotion and you also have cost of living. But to me. Um, if we're not aggressively keeping up with marketing. Our, our, our pay grades come in comparison to other areas. Um. And, and I'm looking at like, you'd have to review that yearly to stay on top of that. So if that's not something that we're going to do annually, I just feel like we're going to end up in the same position. And when you look at long-term employees, that zero to me. Um. Does not hold well for a long-term employee. So I, I would be in favor of uh, going to two, two, one, one. So at least there's something there. And I realized that. The uh, pay grade overhaul is pretty comprehensive and brings us to where we need to be. Or, or shouldn't, I shouldn't say where we need to be, where we want to be, where we're comfortable at. So, but I think that that zero there is not a great idea for long-term employees. So I think that should be two, two, one, one. So as it stands now, I would be voting against this. For that reason.
Lisa?
Sure, um, so I, I actually agree with Andy. Um, I, I listened to what trustee left had to say of finance. And it made a lot of sense to me. We have. These long-term employees, all our employees for the last few years, I think have been below, you know, the market value. Um, one of the things that the company requested or suggested to us was that. We could do another study in two to three to five years. Or probably within three years. And that could um, address this issue. And so in my, in my mind, I say two, two, one, one. And if we do another study in three years. That can be looked at again and maybe it can change, but I worry that what will happen in the last few years. Will happen again. We get busy. We have a lot of other things we need to fund. Um. So this doesn't leave those people behind. Um. So I have, I agree with Andy, two, two, one, one.
And the hope is that we will, excuse me, look at this um, regularly so that we can be market competitive. And then um, also do a study. More frequently than we have in the past so that we can have that independent outside party. Take a look at our wages and make sure that we are aligned still. Um, and the thought process also of. Um. McGrath gave us some very good suggestions as far as other benefits that we could look at exploring for our employees. Um, so any potential cost savings of um, going to the two, two, one, zero. Um, could then be. Put towards those additional benefits per um. Potentially looking at our longevity. Um, and increasing that number because right now it's a dollar fifty per month of service. Um, or. Looking at contributions to health, um, insured. So that. The thought process is that aggressive approach is not financially sustainable. So moving to the non-aggressive approach then frees us to. Take those funds and put it to the employees in other areas um, that are more fiscally responsible.
Excuse me?
Um, yeah, I was not in favor of this at finance. I'm not in favor of it now. Um, it's, doesn't show any appreciation to our long-term employees. And it absolutely has to be looked at on a regular basis annually. So I'm not in favor of this. Um, I won't be more in favor of it tonight.
Good.
David, how are you defining regularly? I mean, is that annually or?
From my understanding. Prior to. Um, a few years ago, it was an annual adjustment based off of um. Cost of living essentially. If the cost of living increase was a two percent, the scale also moved up a two percent. Um.
Yeah, if I can explain that, so. Uh. I've been here the longest, so um, I got all this history that people don't like to hear. Um, it used to be reviewed um, every other year. One of your uh, salaried employees would be reviewed and the pay scales would be adjusted the next year. Uh, hourly, and they would be adjusted by internal um, review. Um, then, you know, start over again, so. Um, and then it just, it just stopped with new administrator. Uh, my hope would be that. Again, I wouldn't be doing it, but that we could get back to the annual because that does keep the pay scale. Where it needs to be. So you're not doing these big adjustments. Um, which then does fall in line. The um. Prior to also when I started, the, the um, changes were uh, four, two, one, zero. For quartiles, so.
Uh, the second half was actually both zero.
Oh, yeah, second half was both zero, yeah. Um. So, but yeah, I mean, my hope would be that new administrator would be able to do this every other year. To keep in line. So we don't have these adjustments. And then also as Ashley mentioned, there was a list of. Uh, benefits that we could do. Um, potentially the, I think the, for long-term employees, the best. Change would be to the longevity program. And how that would impact, but. Um, just letting you know that hopefully. Moving forward, it's done every year to keep everybody where they need to be in the right pay grade and the, the right scales.
And we use the wrong terminology because then I was saying hopefully we're saying. You know, regular base of what, again. I don't want to see hopefully. I don't want to see, I, I want regularly defined. Annually. And that hopefully we will do this.
Um, it's, I mean, it's hard to commit without a new administrator. So that's what I'm saying, hopefully.
I appreciate the history on this, so thank you for that. Um. For me, it is, it was discouraging to hear um. The previous administrator say during the fin- finance committee meeting that um. You know, having that one, that zero percent in the fourth quarter would be saving us like twelve thousand dollars or whatever it would be. Um, that just seemed like, quite frankly, a slap in the face to our employees. Um, in order to save the village as a whole, like a couple of bucks. Um. Also for it being merit-based, um, it's pretty much impossible from my understanding for someone to get a five in that review. They would have to be doing like above and beyond three hundred sixty-five days a year in order to get that. Five on their merit review. Um, and the. Having that uh, increases just, quite frankly, it sounds unobtainable. Um, so I am uh, going to echo what my fellow trustees have been saying tonight that I disagree with the uh. The current um. Format of the two, two, one, zero. Um, and do you feel that it should be changed to the two, two, one, one? Um. In order to show our long-tenured employees that. Um, they do matter and that we do hear and see them and that we value their time with our village. So I'm very pleased to hear from my fellow trustees tonight that um, that sentiment is being echoed. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna pretty much echo the si- a similar thing of the length of service adjustment. Um, as a person who has done the manager side of this, of the uh. Of this job, uh, getting those performance for merit reviews are very hard to get anywhere above uh, a, a three. Um, so having a consistent increase in pay is a more appropriate thing for the people here. Especially with the current job market very much being a um. I- i- it's hard to find companies that want to keep people. So I think we should make sure that we are one of those places that want to keep our people here.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, I voted, I, I voted for this at uh, finance and, you know, giving some considerable thought to this on. You know, we're looking at an average, and if an average employee is making thirty dollars an hour, a one, a one percent raise. Um, is thirty cents. Um, every, every penny makes, makes a difference. Um, I think our employees, we spent a great deal of time looking at what's going to make our employees happy through this entire wage study. And what we can do for them. Are we really going to um. Uh, really, really going to move. Forward with this by saying a zero. Um, I, I would also agree. I think this motion is going to fail. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take a vote here. Um, on this motion, all in favor say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Hey, I will look for an updated motion um, to do the two, two. One, one. Let's see if you care to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the updated Grafton Village Compensation Plan and Performance Evaluation System Manual. To come effective January first twenty twenty six. With changing the length of service. Um. Factors to two, two, one, one.
I'll second that.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Very good. All right, let's go to adopt a resolution to approve the updated classification structure for seasonal employees effective January first. Twenty twenty-six, moving the park seasonal crew person, public works seasonal crew person. Utility seasonal operator positions to pay grade seven direct staff to implement the recommended title. And pay grade changes on the various job descriptions, creation of a snowplow operator job description and associated placement. Of the position into pay grade nine of the classification structure for seasonal employees. Creation of a utility intern job description and associated placement. Of the position into pay grade nine of the classification structure for seasonal employees. Elimination of police laborer program director, police receiver. Uh, intern planning, indoor pool manager and outdoor pool manager positions. Look for um, a, uh, offer a motion in a second.
I'll make the offer.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Very good. So um, again, this is another discussion we had at the finance and um, the finance uh, uh, committee came up with this. This uh, motion. Um, we just need to make sure that we understand that um, under the current situation, that we would be. Increasing the budget of a loan by approximately twelve thousand dollars. Um, I think that's a fair um, estimation, correct? Well, twelve thousand dollars on that.
Uh, yes, that's assuming though all of the seasonal employees would be at step one.
Okay, great. So um, yeah, I think that again, we're in a situation where we're looking to recruit and retain. Um, best people and certainly paying people uh, is always a good start. So anybody wish to discuss this any further? Andy?
Um, yes. Uh, I was at the meeting again where this was brought up and brought forward to the village board. Um, I am not in agreement with changing the recommendations. For the uh, seasonal parks group person, public work seasonal group person, utility seasonal. Operator positions. Um. The, the people that did the work on this did extensive um, what I'll call. Cross-checking to look and see that these things were right-sized. I know that there was um. One of them went from pay grade one to pay grade four, different things that were eliminated because we're not utilizing those positions. I think the amount of work and time that went into it. Um, as a village board, we delegate those operations to people to give us a best recommendation. Now they, they're looking at comparison uh, of grades with other locations around us. Uh, so I don't like to, I don't want to stick my hand in that and tamper with what was presented initially. Um, I, I do agree with the temporary snowplow operator position. Uh, because I, I can see that being something that would be useful for us. And, and um, the utility intern job description, again, that might, might be useful for us. To create those things. And obviously I'm in agreement with elimination of the ones that we're not utilizing or. Um, that have no. Position anymore in, in our, in our structure. So that would be my only um. That's my reason for, I would say I'd like to go back to what was presented as what was presented to the committee. Um, to the grades as opposed to changing those specific ones.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Other questions? Lisa?
I agree with Andy. Yeah, I was at finance also.
Curative? Anyone else? Kevin?
Uh, I also agree with Andy. I do think that um, you know, the people here have done a good job of putting. Uh, I also agree with Andy. I do think that, um, you know, the people here have done a good job of putting positions at the levels they should be, so we should stick with that.
Very good. All in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Raise your hands.
Aye.
Okay, so that's, uh, this motion does not pass. So we'll look at an alternate motion here. Would like to make that motion. Andy, what's your idea? How about a motion?
My idea? You know, I would like to make a motion to, uh, well, is it, it's an offer, second in a motion, is that correct?
Then, is that correct? It's offer motion, second.
It's offer motion.
Okay, I would like to offer then to adopt a resolution to approve the updated classification structure for seasonal employees effective January one, twenty twenty-six, uh, as previously presented, including the direct staff to implement and recommend, directing the staff to implement recommended pay and title and pay grade changes to the various job descriptions, create the snowplower operator position, into grade nine, the seasonal, um, uh, and a creation of a utility intern job into pay nine, and then the elimination of those jobs that are currently presented in the motion.
Okay, Carmen, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay, you have a motion. Um, offer, motion in second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Dave, offer a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six, one. You got it. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's go on to, uh, the motion to reclassify the assistant village administrator committee development director position, staff committee development director position and place it in pay grade twenty-one of approved pay scale changes identified in the class and comp. Final report to be effective immediately be approved. Um, just bringing this one up because in order to go ahead and get, uh, recruitment um, through PAA, we, uh, need to, um, in, to, uh, that, that position into pay grade twenty-one. I'll look for an offer, I'm, I'm sorry. Look for a motion in a second.
Motion to reclass, uh, second.
Very good. Um, discussions on this at all? All right, see nothing there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, opposed? And that motion carries. Very good. Thank you very much. Let's go to public works, uh, prove the purchase and installation of delineation sticks and signs at the intersection of Wisconsin sixteen and thirteenth avenue as proposed for total material cost not to exceed seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I had a little discussion about this this morning that, uh, it seems kinda crazy for us to bring one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to, uh, the, um, village board. However, this is a change in traffic. So essentially looking, taking place on thirteen, heading southbound, uh, to highway sixty, that that would become a right to turn only. Am I correct in that? I got that down there. So, um, we'll look for a motion in a second to bring this to the table for discussion. Um, we're looking for that right now.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Uh, Lisa and Andy, thank you. Andy, you were gonna win the prize tonight for the number of offers and motions. Thank you very much. You'll get a silver star for that. Not a bronze, but a silver. Very good. Okay, so, uh, questions on this, uh, as we move forward? Anybody? Andy?
My comment about it is I think it's an excellent way of trying out what we're going to do to alter the traffic there without the significant expenditure of pouring concrete and tearing concrete out. Uh, it also allows that in the event that there's a vehicle accident there, because there are delineation sticks, that, uh, our concrete doesn't cause a bigger problem like it does in front of the house perhaps.
Lisa, anything?
No, a hundred percent agreed. And, um, at some point, if we need to put concrete down, you know, that may be a learning curve for the snowplow drivers. So I think this is a great idea. It was, uh, it was, it was great to have that coming from public works.
Thank you. Um, just, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to see this. This is finally coming up here because the folks who own the house, I mean, the soul south, uh, east corner, uh, on that little house have been hit three times. And the one common thing that we see is people just do not pay attention to that sign. Today, even on the way in, I see a nice black BMW making a left-hand turn there with the directional signal. I just wanna get out of my car and say, pay attention to that sign because you're crossing, crossing, uh, three lanes of traffic and oftentimes it's blind. So I think I really give credit to the board of public works coming up in this. I think the owners of that also asked for that in points in time. And I'm glad we, um, I'm glad we're considering this. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, proof of purchase of a new twenty twenty-five Ford F-three fifty from Ewell Ford Hartford. That costs not to exceed forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. This came through public works. I'm sure you guys took a real close look at this and this is part of a budgeted item, correct, Paul?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll look for a motion in a second for approval of this.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thanks, Dave and Amy. Andy, I'm gonna take Donald Brown's star. Um, so we've got a motion, second, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Uh, reported public safety committee adopt the new fee and fine schedule for chapter sixteen point twenty dash alarm systems. Uh, this is pretty much, uh, good thing for discussion. Looking for that motion to adopt the new fee and fine schedule, uh, chapter sixteen point two alarm systems be approved. Look for a motion in a second. Bring to discussion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
You're back at the silver star. Thank you very much. Um, okay, questions on this at all? Um, I know this one's your public safety. Amy, you probably have a little more info on this than the other folks who attended.
Yeah, I mean, we really didn't have a fine schedule, um, advertised at all within our code, so we have the annual fee listed. Um, but obviously, there's a lot of residents out there that have alarm systems that we're probably not even aware of. So this will help generate some extra funds with that. Uh, I think, um, chief put together a nice presentation, um, that shows the documentation of what will be allowed. Um, there'll be a little grace period if they don't, um, have their permit in order. And they'll also go through a little training class to help them with their getting a system, um, set up. But I think it's a good thing for our community.
Very good. Questions? Lisa?
Sure, um, I hope I can ask you, assistant chief, um, how many alarms do you normally get in a week or a month?
What do you?
Okay, that was something I meant to ask the public safety. I'm sorry that I missed that meeting. Um, I'm wondering if that's the reason that this initially came to public safety or if it was mostly just to be able to, you know, make a little revenue. I mean, if there's ten or twenty or two.
If, if I may, I did talk to chief about this a while back and, um, and said, kinda wanna find out why, why this is now suddenly an issue. And he says that there's generally somewhere around a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five alarms a year that they have. And it seems that there's somewhere in the area, it's generally the eighty, twenty percent rule. Eighty percent of the, of the places have the same alarm. And what I heard it was that we spend a great deal of time going out there, responding to the alarm and then coaching these folks. And, and I think you would know more about them.
It's poor businesses. Most of our problems are businesses.
Yeah.
They're false alarms, the manpower issues that we have responding to those. Um, yeah, nine times out of ten, it's, it's, it's error or appointment error. And I, I think the chief is trying to move away from some type of punitive action to something that's more business-friendly. Uh, the bond str- structure, the bond mounts that the chief is proposing are significantly cheaper than the information I got from the Mid-Murray municipal court today. Compared to when you, if you're, you're looking at, you know, wire ticket, right now, you're looking at, at least based off the information I was given from Mid-Murray's or the wire ticket, it's about two hundred and fifty bucks. The chief's, uh, suggestion, it would be a hundred and fifty. So I mean, it's, it's significantly lower, but I think the goal, from what I understand, I mean, um, the goal is to get away from out of municipal court and kind of make it more business-friendly to make it to global view and one of the businesses.
Good.
Uh, and trying, and trying to regulate.
Okay, very good.
And also, um, we're just taking care of things manually now, like in a pre-rent binder where this is now gonna be an automated system and we should look at a generation of like close to twenty-five thousand, um, revenue fees.
Yes.
Any other questions?
You, you're anticipating generating twenty-five thousand dollars in, in revenues from this in a, in a year?
At the estimated annual revenue, from permit and fees.
From permanent fees alone.
So, okay, we're not speaking into the microphone, folks. So we'll try that again. So we're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars. Amy, is that what you said?
Yep, um, permit and fees as to get an annual.
With all the businesses in the area.
And homes.
And homes. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Very good. All right, um, we'll go to the department and officers report. Thank you very much, chief. We appreciate it. Um, let me see. Clark, you've been, uh, Clark, wait. See, I've already called you, Clark. Uh, Clint, you have been here almost just a little over a week in your official capacity. And I'm sure you have a lot to report.
I'm a huge report, which I'll wait till the next meeting.
Thank you very much and thank you for, uh, your engagement so far. We really appreciate it. All right, uh, we'll go to the reported bills. I'll look for a motion in a second on the village expenditures.
Motion approved?
I'll second.
Time to let both start, Andy. Um, all right, we have a motion in a second. I did see some questions. Thank you, Lisa, for submitting those questions. Uh, any other questions on the bills at this point in time? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lisa and Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll see you Monday night.
David? I would love this. Probably.